City Council for March 25th, 2025. The City Council will recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551-071 to consult with and seek the advice of the city's legal counsel, 551-072 to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, 551-074 to discuss personnel matters, and 551-087 to discuss economic development matters. The City Council is recessing at 12:31? The City Council is now reconvening in open session at 2:00 PM, and we're now going to take up our ceremonial items. I call on Pastor Ryan Smallwood with Aldersgate Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by Councilman Gordon Harris, who will lead us in the U.S. and Texas Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand, and thank you for being here?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Let's pray together. God, we give you thanks for this day, and we're reminded as we gather together in this place that you knew we would be here long before we ever did. So we thank you for your sovereignty, and as we gather, we gather in your name. And so, God, we thank you for this city that we live in. We thank you for these that stand here in front of us, that you have put in these positions. And God, we pray that they would lead in a godly way. God, we pray that you would give them everything that they need to make the decisions that you've asked them to make to lead this city. And so, we pray for all the wisdom and discernment and provision that they need to do that. We do just pray, God, that you would continue to bless this great city and your people. May we be a light for you, and may we be a light for so many others to look upon. And, God, we have needs right now. We pray for rain. We ask that you would bring rain to us, bring rain to our land. God, water is always an issue for us, and so we will continually ask you for that, and God, just trust that you will provide. We pray for all those whose lifestyle and their way of living is dependent on not only the weather, but just the economy and all the things that go with that. And, God, we just remind you that that all comes from you. And so, we just look to you as that great provider and trust that you will give that to us. And so, God, this afternoon, as we gather together, may it be about honoring you. May everything we do and say be charitable and loving you and loving our neighbor. And so, we thank you for your presence here and trust that you will lead, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I'm... Thank you. I now call the meeting to order and take up, to take up citizen comments. According to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting, that is, of the City Council regarding any matter posted on the City Council agenda shall complete the sign-up form provided at the meeting no later than 2:00 PM on March 25th, 2025. Please remember to give us your name and address, and that you will have three minutes to make your comments. A warning bell will sound when you have 30 seconds left to make your comments, and Jimmy will do that. Jimmy, can you give us an example? There you go. Okay, at this time, we have two names. The first one is, I believe it's Kylie Cantu. Is that correct? Ms. Cantu, are you here? Oh, Kathy, I'm so sorry, Kathy. Will you state your name and your address?
Kathy Cantu, and the address is 2106 50th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79412.
Thank you. You may start.
Okay, we were just here because I was here because we wanted to go ahead and do a change on the zoning where our business is located at, the 2106 50th Street, to 2110 and 2112, same 50th Street. And so, we were wanting to go ahead and do the changes on that. So, from the neighborhood commercial district to the commercial, auto, urban commercial.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. At this time, we'd like to ask Michael Maldonado, who has also signed up for public comment.
Good afternoon. Michael Maldonado, 1105 81st Street. I've come in favor of the change to the zoning, because nothing will be done aesthetically to the front elevation of the building, so it's not going to change any of the aesthetics in a bad way or in a good way, other than putting a sign up for the business we're wanting to put into that place. It's a twofold situation. The second is allowing to put a garage door on the west elevation, which I think are the two reasons we're having to come before the board, and have already come before the zoning board, and now coming before this board. But I am here in favor of doing that in order to expand our business and offer another service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Maldonado.
Thanks.
At this time, we will now take up the agenda item 4.1, the minutes for the February 25th, 2025 regular City Council meeting, and the March 5th, 2025 regular City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve item 4.1? Motion by Councilman Rose. Can I get a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion approved carries on a unanimous vote. We will now take up item 5, the consent agenda. There has been a request to pull items 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.24, 5.25, and 5.39 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.24, 5.25, and 5.39? Motion by Councilman Collins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Since they are related, we're going to take up items 5.5 and 5.6 together, and I will call on our city manager to provide the council briefing on this matter. And following that, I will entertain a motion. So, Jared?
Thank you, Mayor Protim, City Council. Just real quickly, wanted to highlight these two items. They look like things you have seen before, but they represent a change. So, item 5.5 specifically is the purchase of stop-loss insurance, and I'll explain where that comes in in just a bit. And item 5.6 is to secure the services of what is called a third-party administrator or a TPA. Specifically, both of these items are related to the city's workers' compensation insurance program. We have been watching our numbers. We've got a three-year running analysis on are we better off financially as a city to use fully insured, so coverage from a third party in all aspects, or to go to what is called self-insured insurance? With the renewal cycle that's in front of you today, the numbers have moved and opened up a big enough gap that we are recommending that the city move to a self-insured workers' compensation insurance program. The stop-loss insurance is in the amount of $750,000, so that becomes your upper limit on a claim. We carry it up to that. If it keeps going, the stop-loss insurance picks up and pays it for the remainder of that claim's life. The third-party administrator is required to process and help us manage through all the claims processing. So, the city will be paying the claims up until they hit stop-loss, if they actually do hit stop-loss, very few, very few of those. We have an offer in front of you, and this is actually on item 5.6. We have a two-year locked contract to try this. We estimate approximately a $720,000 per year savings, so times two is 1.45 million. It is the same level of coverage, it's the same eligibility. Any of our folks that unfortunately need workers' comp, they're not going to see a difference. What we will see is in our budgets as we go forward this year, that savings that will carry forward to each and every department within the city. So, I do have experts here. If you have hard questions, if they're somewhat easy, I would be glad to try to speak to them. Do recommend, now that this gap is as big as it is, that we move to the self-insured program. With a two-year history or two-year run, if it's working, we'll continue. If it's not, we'll go back to a fully insured program. And this switch has been made a couple of times in Lubbock's history with workers' comp. So, I'll stop now.
Okay. And I now entertain a motion to approve items 5.5 and 5.6.
So moved.
So moved, I mean, sorry, not so moved, but he moved, Councilman Rose. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gashin. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion to approve carries on a unanimous vote. We will now take up items 5.7, and we'll call on Eric Rahino, our Assistant City Manager, to provide the council briefing on this matter.
Mayor Protim Council, good to be with you. Just wanted to go over item 5.7. This is a second read of an alley closure located over at between 14th and 15th Street, west of Avenue X. This is actually tied to the student housing project. It's being currently in the process, they've been in the process of relocating utilities, specifically a sewer line. That sewer line is nearing completion. We actually did do the first read of the ordinance abandoning the alley closure back February 25th, and the contract is nearing completion and not quite done yet. So, you've got a revised ordinance in front of you that has a couple of changes. First of all, it acknowledges that the sewer relocation is currently under construction. And number two, it also makes the effective date of the ordinance once that sewer line infrastructure has been completed and accepted by the city. So, in essence, what it does, it allows us to put ourselves in a better position to expedite issuing the permit once the alley closure is done. So, that's the only reason we've made the change. We think it'll buy about a week or two for the building permit, and allows us, once that sewer line is done, for staff to accept it and who for would issue the building permit. So, with that, I'll be happy to address any questions.
Mayor Protim, I'm going to substitute the ordinance number 2025-00030. That is in our current council packet with the ordinance that has been passed out currently under guise.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the items as suggested. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilman Collins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Rose. Is there any discussion with that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion to approve carries on a unanimous vote, and we will now take up item 5.24, and I'll call on Catherine Wells, the Director of the Health Department, to provide the Thank you for being here.
Sorry about that, Council. Good afternoon. 5.24 is our annual immunization grant from the Texas Department of State Health Services. This grants in the amount of 200 and, I think it's 30, $35,000. Don't quote me on that, I'll give you the exact amount. This is a grant that we've had at the Health Department for many years. It provides, it covers the cost of staffing for two nurses, a community outreach worker, and that community outreach worker actually provides the support to our physicians' offices in the community to allow them to enroll in the Texas for Vaccine Children's Program. The two nurses allows us to provide immunizations at the Health Department. This grant also gives us access to free vaccine from the state, and that's around $300,000 a year. Happy to take any comments. It also helps support part of one of my nurse managers.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve items 524. Motion by Dr. Wilson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Collins. All those in, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
Our first issue with this agenda item is that, again, we don't have the full scope of work in the agenda materials that were provided to us. The contract, if you look at page 394, for example, 395 of the agenda, it references statements of work, which are attachments to a contract. And so, there's a general scope of work. There's also a 2025 scope of work and a 2026 scope of work. We don't have the general scope of work attached, and we don't have the 2025 scope of work attached. So, if you vote for this today, you don't know what the actual scope of work is on the grant, because the Health Department has not provided us with that information. I think it'd be prudent to get the full scope of work and give everybody on the council a chance to review it before we vote on it today. The issue that I have with the 2026 scope of work is that this grant requires us to not deny services to recipients because they do not reside within the grantee's jurisdiction, because of inability to pay an administrative fee, or because of denial to consent to the Texas Immunization Registry. I'm especially concerned about the city Lubbock Health Department becoming a regional health department, and want to make sure that if we are spending city resources in a city health department, that it is for the benefit of the city. If we want to do a regional vaccination program, then that should be done by somebody other than the city of Lubbock. So, I think it's appropriate to delay approval of this until we've had a chance to review the full scope of work, and I think that we need to seriously consider how much the city of Lubbock is going to be providing services to people who are outside of our jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Gashin. Is there any other discussion? I just want to remind everyone that this is not just the city health department, it is a city-county health department. That is a very significant partnership, and it's pretty standard historically, the services that have been provided. So, I do encourage that we support this resolution. And is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
The language of the 2026 scope of work doesn't just limit our partnership to the cooperation with the county. I think a really relevant point to consider, for example, is you have residents of Gaines County, for example, that are coming to Lubbock, they're shopping, and visiting other services, and then they're going to come to the city health clinic and get treated at the city. That's just one example, and, I mean, especially with the outbreak of measles, for example, in Gaines County. We don't need to expose Lubbock residents to measles by giving the people an incentive to come here. We don't need to be taking on the cost and the effort of taking care of people across the region. Even if we do cooperate with the county, we don't need to extend our cooperation or the services that we provide any broader than that.
Well, I could provide a rebuttal. I would like to ask Ms. Wells if she will respond to Councilman Gashin's comment on the Gaines County and how we have best served folks around in our area.
The contact, the contract language in the 2026 is standard language from the state. Anybody, for a lot of our contracts, if they show up at our door requesting services that are provided by the state through contract, then we are required to see them. When I look at things like communicable diseases, they don't know boundaries, and we have people traveling in and out of our community with different types of diseases, especially with measles right now, and it is important that we offer that vaccine to everybody that comes into this county.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, Councilman Collins?
Just a couple of questions, Ms. Wells. So, you're limited in your capacity to administer these vaccinations by the, by the limit of the grant. Is that correct? Do you add other city dollars to, to be able to administer vaccinations?
There are some city dollars that go into funding nurses at the Health Department. I don't necessarily designate which nurse does specifically vaccine versus another service. There is, I don't have the exact numbers of people that come outside of Lubbock to receive vaccination services, but I'm, my guess would be it was less than 5% of the people we serve.
So, you multitask your nurses, is what you're telling us? They don't do just one task and sit and wait for the next patient to come through?
No.
So, you get additional funding from the state to help keep nurses in place to do whatever service provision that needs to be done that day?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, so we're seeing state money supplement our local nurses, is what I'm, is the point I'm trying to make?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I guess that, you know, West Texas has become maybe the epicenter of measles, unfortunately, at this point in time, and so any, I would suggest that anything that we can do to help slow this down, to tamper the spread of this disease, would be something that we would want to encourage, whether they lived here or lived outside the area at this time.
Yes.
Just my, my sense of that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I understand the motion to approve this is pending, but I would encourage you to vote against approving it at this time until, and then what, with the denial of the current motion, then we'll postpone it to the next City Council meeting on April 8th to allow you to see the full scope of work and the full terms of the grant, because that information's not in your agenda packet, you haven't had a chance to review and read what's actually going to be required of the city under this contract.
Councilmember Gashin, is that in the form of a motion to postpone?
Is it time to make a motion to postpone?
Well, I think unless there's more discussion that's going to be had on the current motion, if the motion, whether it's approved, if it's approved, then we're done with the agenda item. So, if you want to make a motion, now would be the time to do it.
Well, then, at that, that, I will make a motion to postpone till a date certain, April 8th, agenda item 5.24.
Councilman Gashin has made a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Well, it would die for lack of a second, so you go back.
Okay. So, we go back, and I'll entertain a motion to approve item 5.24. I'm sorry, we already did that. All those in favor of this agenda item?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Negative.
So, that is five against one. Motion carries. We'll now take up item 5.25, and again, Catherine Wells, the Director of Health Department, to provide the council briefing on this matter.
The contract that I'm bringing to you is with Texas Department, I mean, sorry, the Texas Tech University Health Science Center, Department of Internal Medicine. This is for services provided at our intermediary care clinic. The intermediary care clinic contract for physician services is with family medicine. I have a physician that's in infectious disease that is also willing to support us in the clinic, but because he's not in family medicine, he doesn't fall under that contract, so we need to do a second, a separate contract with internal medicine. And then, this is that, presenting that contract so that he is able to fill in for some of the hours at the intermediary care clinic.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve item 5.25. Motion by Councilman Collins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, second by Councilman Rose. Is there any discussion? David, Councilman Gashin?
Thank you. Looking at this agenda item, the source of funding for this position would be an ARPA grant. These are the American Relief Program dollars. For, I'll say, first of all, as a budget policy, it's very, it's imprudent to use a one-time grant of dollars in support of what is going to be an ongoing obligation to fund this position. It's a mismatch of the type of dollars to what we have in a recurring obligation to pay a staff position. So, when this ARPA dollars are used up, what are we going to do? Is this going to be supplemented by the general fund or another, another source? I think we need to find a more appropriate match for one-time dollars to be used on one-time expenses. I'm also opposed to expanding the staff and the services at our city's clinics. We already have, in the community, the benefit of the physicians who are at the Texas Tech Health Science Center. If people in the community need to see this doctor, they can go see the doctor at Texas Tech Health Science Center. We're not, we're not benefiting the community by bringing in some sort of skill or service that's unavailable currently. So, because of the mismatch between the type of dollars and their ongoing obligation they would create, as well as the expansion of the scope, it's appropriate to vote against this.
Is there any other discussion? Sorry. Councilman Collins?
Thank you. The way I read this contract, this is an additional service provided to our city health department from Health Sciences Center for infectious disease control and treatments. This is a work order contract or a job order contract that lasts for only a period of one year.
Correct.
And it, and it, so it has a limitation. It does not include, correct me if I'm wrong, but it does not include any requirement for you to add to your staff. Is that correct?
No.
No? Okay, so, so what we're talking about doing is hiring someone to assist us during, again, a very, very difficult time in terms of infectious diseases within our region, and Health Sciences Center has the appropriate staff and, and resources to step in, and they've offered to do this alongside a contract for other services that they already provide to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I think, I just want to clarify and question, the doc that's coming in, that's an infectious, infectious disease doctor, is he going to be serving in that capacity, or is he serving as a general practitioner in the intermediary clinic?
He's doing both. We have seen individuals come into the intermediary care clinic who need some infectious disease specialist, so he will be able to do that, but he will also help with filling in when our resident or another physician's not available.
So, serving also as a general practitioner?
And we will be able to bill for his services.
Now, does this contract allow you to transition the intermediary clinic into a full-time where they stay? Because right now, it's just a transition clinic, correct? Where they're there 90 days roughly, you know, trying to get into a PCP?
Yes.
You know, and so I wanted to kind of talk about that point a little bit to Councilman Gashin's point of, you know, we're providing a service that Tech provides. Well, that's not necessarily true. As a physician, sometimes it takes six months or longer to get in with PCPs around here because we're so short-staffed. And so, this clinic is used as a, a stopgap, as to make sure that they don't fall through the cracks, infectious, infectious diseases are treated, you know, patients maintain whatever medications were started in the hospital, and then transitioning them into a PCP clinic, correct? Okay, so the contract's not asking to make that now in a full-time clinic where they can go forever, it's still transitioning them to a home?
Yes, it's still transitioning, and it's filling in for hours that we have already had budgeted. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Rose?
This is a question for the city manager. Jared, the ARPA dollars have, have to be already allocated. Is that, is that correct? If this isn't passed, what happens to those dollars?
This is a different set.
This is a different set of dollars than what we've been discussing over the last several months. There, ARPA ended up, there's ARPA for public health, there's ARPA at the airport, there was ARPA at transit or city bus. This is not the project-based money that we were talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
So it's one, five in favor and one against. The motion to approve carries on a unanimous, on a five to one vote. Okay? We now move on to, thank you, Dr., Catherine Wells, I almost said doctor, but she, almost, almost. Did she say tomorrow?
Yeah.
Congratulations. We will now take up the regular agenda and council will conduct a public hearing. Did I miss one? Sorry about that. There it is. We will now take up Item 5.3.9. And I'll call Bill Howerton, our deputy city manager, to provide the council briefing on this matter.
Mayor Protim, if, if I might interrupt, I think this could possibly be an item to where we would entertain a motion to postpone to date certain?
Yes, I believe that's what we discussed, right? So can I get a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, this item has, has a number of questions, I think, that we've asked of staff. The representative from MB3 LLC could not be with us today. And so I would ask that we postpone this item date specific until our meeting April 20th.
Okay, there's been a motion to postpone. Can I get a second?
I, I think we meant April 20.
22nd.
Sorry, April 22nd. Or, or. I don't think we want to be here on a Sunday. I would prefer not as well.
We can be here by ourselves.
So we'll go to 22nd, my apologies.
Thank you, Councilman Collins. And we have a second by Councilman Harris. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion to approve carries on a unanimous vote. And we now do move on to our regular agenda. And the council will conduct a public hearing on the zoning case for Agenda Item 6.1. The council has already received in their packet the staff report from the planning department and the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a reminder, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during the public hearing. I now call on Kristin Sager, Director of Planning, to provide a brief summary on Agenda Item 6.9, 6.1, that is. And I will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1. Please go ahead and give us your comments, Kristin.
Good afternoon. Item 6.1 is zone case 112G located in District 2. The request is from Presto Hail Lifters for Lawn Miller to rezone property from Neighborhood Commercial to Auto Urban Commercial. We sent out 46 notifications, receiving no response. This property is located north of 50th, west of Avenue U. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are commercial businesses up and down 50th Street with residential to the north. The current zoning is Neighborhood Commercial. There is additional Neighborhood Commercial, Auto Urban Commercial, Heavy Commercial along 50th with high-density residential, medium-density and low-density residential to the north. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. There is an existing auto hail repair business in this location. They are looking to expand, which is why they need the zone change. The future land use designation is for commercial land uses. So the request for AC zoning is in conformance. It is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It will not change the character of the existing development. The proposed zone change is along 50th Street and west of Avenue U. 50th is a principal arterial and Avenue U is a collector. Staff had no objection to the request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, I will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1. And those speaking, please give us your name and address when you come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to any of these zone cases? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? And I will point out that we did have two public comments by the individuals. If there are no others, I will now close the public hearing at 2:35. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilman Rose. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The motion to approve carries on a unanimous vote. We now will take up Item 6.2. And I will call on Joe Jimenez to provide the council briefing on this matter. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties, but we'll get that fixed in a minute.
Thank you, sir. So good afternoon. Before you, today is an ordinance to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed 54 million. Again, these bonds are going to cover all the street projects that were approved in the fiscal year '22 and '24, voter-approved bonds in November. So we do plan to go price these bonds on Monday or Tuesday, April 1st. And with us today, we have Mr. Bowles. I'm kind of teeing it up for him. He's going to give an update on the market and what we can expect on Tuesday. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez, Madam Mayor Protim.
Good to see you.
And members of the council, Mr. Atkinson. Good afternoon. I'm joined today by Jerry Kyle, your bond counsel with Ora Carrington and Sutcliffe. And Jerry can certainly step up and answer questions if we have them from a legal nature. What's before you today is an order authorizing the issuance of these obligations should certain parameters be satisfied and that order is delegated to members of your staff to execute. And as Mr. Jimenez said, we do plan to price these obligations next Tuesday. And before we, we do that, I always like to come out and see you all and tell you a little bit about the market, what we see preliminarily for results of the transaction, although that won't be fully locked in until next Tuesday. And also wanted to take a little bit of time today to talk about your credit ratings. We got feedback from two of the nationally-recognized credit rating agencies. And we've got some data here, or not data, but some dialogue around what they wrote about you all because I think it's good information for you to take away and for your constituents to hear. I've already flashed forward to the first page here to talk a little bit about the market. Admittedly, most people are focused in on the equity markets these days with the administration bringing about tariffs specifically to China, Mexico and Canada, and then talks of additional tariffs. Some days they're on, some days they're off. There has been a bit of a jumpy market from an equity standpoint. All that to say that if you look at the fixed income capital markets, so the bond markets, yes, they've had their own sense of volatility, but not near the levels of volatility that we've seen in the equity market. In fact, the bellwether that we look at in the bond market is the 10-year Treasury that's trading at about 4.31% now. And we've been in and around that level for the last three weeks during this time of sort of economic uncertainty and turmoil. What's essentially driving the, the nature of all of this volatility is the notion that GDP could be lower because of the tariffs and our inflation could be higher because of the tariffs, both of which are really relatively unknown in terms of, of absolutely what's going to happen. But we'll continue to watch that. All of that to say that I feel really good about where things stand in the municipal bond market where you'll issue these obligations. So on this next page, I wanted to go through a couple of things that I always talk about when I have the chance to see you all. The first of which is in the lower left-hand corner. This is municipal market data. This is my Dow Jones, if you want to look at it that way. It's an index of AAA-rated muni bonds, and this is what we price off of. So the yield curves that you see here are what we talk about when we're actually setting the rates on your obligations. The yellow line is where we stand as of the 21st of this month. And then the dark blue line, it's really a very dark purple line, is the 15-year average. So we are above that. But to remind you, we had the benefit of really two, two and a half years of pandemic-driven rates that really sort of compressed that average. And so it's, it's not, you know, all that true whenever you're considering where we stand today. I feel very good about the rate market, particularly given levels of supply and demand. So last year, 2024, the bond market did about $500 billion nationally in new issued product. This year, we think it will be in that same neighborhood, about $525 billion. But there's an insatiable appetite for that product. And I've said it before, for us just to satisfy coupon payments, reinvestments, maturities that are coming due, we need somewhere close to $600 billion a year now. So we've not yet reached that equilibrium, and that's good for you. There's more demand than there is supply. And for good, solid AA-plus obligations like you're going to be issuing, that's an absolutely a good thing. This is the last thing I'll say about the market, just to put it in perspective over a broader swath of time. The top chart is the Bond Buyer Index. This is just another index of 20 municipal bonds taken on a weekly basis. This goes all the way back to 1961, and the index rate for this week is 4.3%. 67% of the time since 1961, rates have been higher than where we stand today. So as Mr. Jimenez said, you've got some general obligation bonds that you would like to issue for general and street purposes. They come from two different elected authorizations, one from 2022 in the amount of 29.6 million and the other from 2024 in the amount of 19.4 million to get us to 49 million. Mr. Jimenez mentioned 54 million as the parameter. We artificially set it a little bit higher in the event that a project should change, just to give us a little wiggle room. But in actuality, we'll issue $49 million worth of obligations from both of those bond elections, '22 and '24. And the individual product, projects are listed below. You know, if you have questions about that, I can defer to Mr. Jimenez or Mr. Atkinson. But that is the plan as it stands today. We have some summary, a summary of assumptions here. None of this will, will surprise you. As Mr. Jimenez said, we look to offer these obligations for sale next Tuesday, April 1st. They will be structured over a 20-year period, level debt service, so level payments over that 20-year period with a 10-year option to redeem those bonds, which gives you the chance to do one of two things, pay them off early or refinance them in a lower interest rate environment. Going to get to the ratings on the next page, but they were both affirmed at AA+. We have the rating reports we can share with you later. The rates that we will use today are 20 basis points, so 0.2% higher than market. And so whenever I get to that, I'll boil that down to what the actual rate would be. And then the parameters at the bottom of the page are actually embedded in the ordinance that is before you today. And you can see those at the bottom of the page. And then finally, these are the initial metrics. So these are the preliminary numbers. This is not yet done. They won't be done until next Tuesday when we get into the market. But in the center portion of the page, we have the bond summary statistics. And there's all sorts of data there. I've highlighted the one line that I always speak to, and that's the all-in true interest cost is projected to be 4.31%. But that has 20 basis points of cushion. So we're looking at 4.11%. So 4% money, 20-year period, redeemable in 10 years. And that is shown on the right-hand side of the page. And I said at the outset, I would provide some information from S&amp;P and Fitch on your general obligation bond ratings. S&amp;P has you rated AA+. The same by Fitch, AA+. And to remind you all and your constituents, AAA is the highest you can possibly achieve. So you're one notch away from perfection when it comes to your credit rating. And I won't go through each bullet, but there are some things in each of these that I think are noteworthy. They speak to robust financial policies and practices. Those are things that you all, from a policy standpoint, put into place, that your administration carries out. They speak to your solid reserve levels. Those are also embedded in policies and you've not yet, or you, you have not breached those. And your reserves are very robust. And you have very good long-term planning, not the least of which is your capital finance planning. And you know that from a council standpoint. You all talk a whole lot about what's going to go on a bond election, what's not going to go on a bond election and that sort of thing. So there's all sorts of great information embedded in, in both of these snippets here. I thought I would provide that to you. The detailed reports are much longer and protracted, but they also contain some really interesting information. And we'll make sure you get those in your hands as well. So I just wanted to take a minute and talk about that. I want to thank your incredible staff for helping us as we go through these processes. They're not simple. They ask lots of questions. They need lots of data. They want information. They want clarification. And they do a fantastic job of, of meeting the demands of both of these agencies. And we're grateful for that. And then finally, there's some information about the financing team that's been assigned to this offering on the upper left-hand portions, Team My Firm, RBC, and Jerry's firm, Ora, followed by other participants that have been named and will be playing part in this deal next Tuesday. The dates are at the lower left-hand corner. We expect to price next week, execute a bond purchase agreement the same day, and then exchange money. So you will receive money on or about the 30th of April for use on your projects. And with that, Madam Mayor Protim, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. You picked a perfect day to come to Lubbock.
It is so great here.
Compared to what you've had in the past.
Yeah.
And thank you to our staff as well. With that, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.2? Motion by Councilwoman Collins, can I get a second? Second by Dr. Wilson, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, same sign? The motion to approve carries on a unanimous vote. And having exhausted all items on the agenda, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for being here.